Good evening, I'd like to call the March 20th, 2012 meeting of the Yukon City Council to order at this time if you would rise for the invocation by Councilman-elect Michael McCarron of Ward 4 and remain standing for the flag. Lou, please.
Dear Lord, thank you for this wonderful day that you've given to us today. Thank you for all of those people who go in harm's way so that we can conduct our business as we do. Thank you for all of the precious gifts that come to us all of the time. May you look over us during this coming meeting that we use your wisdom and ours to create good things for our wonderful town. In his holy name we pray, amen.
Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Call the roll, please.
Alberts?
Here.
Gerba?
Here.
Bradway?
Here.
Smith?
Maxie?
Here. This time there's one presentation for Municipal Government Week. I think Mr. Bottom, you're going to accept the award?
I will.
Want me to get it here?
Sure.
The proclamation reads, "Whereas Municipal Government Week is an important step in improving the public perception regarding city and town government, and whereas Municipal Government Week provides local citizens the ability to gain a better understanding of how municipal government works, and whereas city and town officials should be recognized for their dedicated service to the community, and whereas during the week of March the 19th through the 23rd, 2012, the cities and towns of the state of Oklahoma have planned activities to promote and support the municipal government." Now, therefore, I, John Alberts, Mayor of the City of Yukon, Oklahoma, do hereby proclaim March the 19th through the 23rd, 2012 to be Municipal Government Week in the City of Yukon, Oklahoma, and urge all citizens to celebrate and recognize Municipal Government Week in its seventh annual year of existence, given under my hand and seal, the City of Yukon, Oklahoma, this twentieth day of March, 2012.
Thank you very much, Mayor.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
The next item on the agenda is the visitor section, and that is the opportunity for anyone to address the council regarding a non-agenda item. If you would come forward at this time and address the council by starting with your name and address, please.
John Kadupel, 410 Oak. The Yukon Historical Society would like to invite everybody to the Farm Museum at Third and Cedar at 1:00, Saturday, November the 24th, at 1:00. March the 24th, at 1:00. We're going to change the name of the Farm Museum to Ernie Borosik Farm Museum, and we're also going to have the Yukon's 131st Birthday. We'll have cake and punch, and we'd like to invite everybody to be there. Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Thanks.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, John.
So that'll be this Saturday, March the 24th, at 1:00 p.m., just behind the Co-op on the north side of 66 Highway. Any other visitors tonight that would like to address the council? Seeing none, we'll proceed with the agenda. At this time, we'll recess as the Yukon City Council and reconvene as the Yukon Municipal Authority. First item is Item 1A on the YMA Consent Docket. This item is placed on the agenda so the Yukon Municipal Authority, by unanimous consent, can designate those routine items that wish to be approved by one motion. If an item does not meet with the approval of all authority members, that item will be heard in regular order. The City Manager recommends a motion to approve A) the minutes of the regular meeting of March the 6th, 2012, and B) the payment of material claims in the amount of $326,327.25. Do I have a motion?
Motion to approve.
Second.
Discussion? Discussion? Call the roll, please.
Maxie?
Yes.
Alberts?
Yes.
Bradway?
Yes.
Gerba?
Yes.
The next item is Item 2A, "Consider authorizing a purchase to include a down payment of $80,000 and the remaining payments totaling $79,950 for the acquisition of a...
Sworzy.
Sworzy. A 7,000 street sweeper is recommended by the Public Works Director to be paid from the stormwater funds. Do I have a motion?
Motion to approve. Second.
Discussion?
Yes.
Yes.
Go ahead.
Mr. Maxie speaks so rarely, Mr. Bradway. Let's let him go.
I was stunned, Mr. Mayor.
I think this is great. I've been trying to do this for 16 years.
Maybe you could be a sponsor, and we can put your name on the site of it, and you can help pay for it.
No, I want to drive it.
A big picture.
We could arrange that.
No, you can't do that, because if he drove it, you'd have to pay him.
Anything else?
That's it.
Mr. Bradway?
Yes. My question, I mean, I'm not against it. I think it's a good deal. We're taking a little bit. It's going to be important for the city to clean our streets, and we've needed it for a long time. Mr. Maxie's right. It's long overdue. Going back to the old one that we used to have, it was, it was, it just wasn't the one we needed to do the job. It was underpowered, it didn't last long, and now we get to my concerns on spending this money, and that is, does it have enough power to do the job? Now, when it has enough power, that means it's going to be around for a long time because of the weather conditions, street conditions, you're sweeping over holes, et cetera, et cetera. My question is, is this thing going to be able to sustain itself over a long period of time?
Not being sure what a long period of time is. For these kinds of units, five to 10 years is the maximum length of time, because they're operating every day, and it takes a lot of maintenance, and it takes a lot of operational skill for these to be efficient over the long haul. It is our intent that this is the first of two units that we will have, and we think that with good maintenance, because we're going to operate it, we're going to start operating this unit at about 4:00 in the morning. We'll do Main Street every day, then we'll split up the rest of the day, four days a week, with residential by the time people pull away from their curbs to go to work, and then finish up after a time when everybody has left the main arteries and we're not in rush hour.
Okay.
The unit will be finished by, we think, noon. We'll do it four days a week, and then we're going to spend one day a week doing nothing but maintaining this unit, trying to make sure that it does last the longest that this unit possibly can.
Matt's sponsoring this, isn't he? Where is he?
He's done the research on it, yes.
What about the, what about the power, Matt? Engine, engine?
The sweeper engine's powered with a 94-horsepower John Deere.
94 horsepower John Deere. Well, that's a lot, that's a lot stronger than the last one we had. And then that's my concern about it. We just didn't buy one big enough, strong enough, to do the job, and I just want to be sure that that's what we're about this time.
That's right.
We're doing it and doing it right. I imagine we go to buy the second one if we, we'll know more about getting the second one after we have some experience with the first one, right?
That's correct.
Okay. Very good. Thank you.
Anyone else?
I think actually the last one was about a golf cart-sized deal.
Yeah, it wasn't.
Particularly on the sweeping.
Yeah, it just wasn't very big.
Other, other question about, whatever happened to that other unit? I've been asked that more than once in my career on the council. Do we use it for scrap or target practice?
We still have the other unit. We use it, Check Festival, to clean up sidewalks and around the curbs here. It's just a small unit.
Uh huh.
It's designed more for your parking lots slash sidewalk areas. Park, it's not designed to go down the street.
Right.
On it. So we still have, we still utilize it every year.
Very good. That's what I need to know, because then I can answer that question. All right.
Matt, I do have one question. What majority, what percentage of maintenance can be done by the city, and what percentage has to be, let's say, contracted out back to Frontier or somebody else in the area that knows how to, you know, expertise in those kind of units?
Well, we'll utilize the first part under warranty with Frontier, but part of the contract with Frontier is they give us unlimited training for our mechanics, so they'll come out to our shop and train our mechanics on how to maintain it, and as long as we own the unit, they'll train mechanics and they'll train drivers.
Wow.
And they'll supply the parts.
I'm sorry.
And they'll supply the parts. We'll buy the parts from them?
Yes.
Thanks.
Well, I have one question. Why is this not part of the lease purchase stuff that we're working on?
Funding source.
Okay. I see, from the stormwater funds.
Exactly. Specific use.
So this is ours, though, and we'll use it until, for five years, expected life?
Five to 10. That's an expected life.
Could we, is it, would it be more prudent to buy the second one with funds that we could use, where we could buy it through a lease purchase, since it's, this is the kind of equipment that wears out?
Yes, it would be. Lease purchases, in fact, the best thing to do is a pure lease, not a lease purchase, but a pure lease, although that does impact your operational costs versus capital improvement cost. These monies are being spent from capital monies, stormwater funds, capital monies, one time. The most efficient way on equipment that has a five to seven-year type lifespan is a pure lease. Send it away, go get a new one and come back. But you have to be able to, you have to be able to justify that on an operational standpoint, because that cannot be capitalized, a pure lease can't.
So, but it's part of the stormwater program also?
That's right.
The money that needs to be spent to, for us to be in compliance. All right. Any other discussion? Call the roll, please.
Gerba?
Yes.
Bradway?
Yes.
Alberts?
Yes.
Maxie?
Yes.
At this time, we'll adjourn as YMA and reconvene as the Yukon City Council. The first item is the Consent Docket. This item is placed on the agenda so the City Council, by unanimous consent, can designate those routine items that wish to be approved by one motion. If the item does not meet with the approval of all council members, that item will be heard in regular order. The City Manager recommends a motion that will approve A) the minutes of the regular meeting of March the 6th, 2012, B) the payment of material claims in the amount of $550,237.56, and C) setting the date of the next regular council meeting for April the 3rd, 2012, 7:00 p.m. in the council chambers of the Centennial Building, 12 South 50, Yukon, Oklahoma. Do I have a motion?
Motion to approve.
Second.
Discussion? Discussion? Call the roll, please.
Alberts?
Yes.
Maxie?
Yes.
Bradway?
Yes.
Gerba?
Yes.
Item 2 on the agenda is the reports of boards, commissions, and city officials.
None at this evening.
Item 3 is "Consider affirming the earlier action of the Yukon Municipal Authority for a purchase to include a down payment of $80,000 and the remaining payments totaling $79,950 for the acquisition of the Swor... Sworz...
Sworzy.
Sworzy. A 7,000 street sweeper, as recommended by Public Works Director, to be paid from the stormwater funds.
So moved.
Second.
Discussion? Discussion? Call the roll, please.
Alberts?
Yes.
Gerba?
Yes.
Maxie?
Yes.
Bradway?
Yes.
Next item is 4, "Consider an expenditure of funds as recommended by the Technology Director for the upgrading and replacement of the audio/video hardware and software at the Centennial Building by Corey's Audio-Visual Services, Inc., in an amount not to exceed $38,650 to be paid from the existing line of credit that Yukon National Bank authorizing the execution of the proposal on waiving competitive bidding." Do I have a motion?
So... Motion to approve.
Second.
Discussion?
I guess this makes us capable to handle AT&amp;Ts?
It does, except for the T1 line that AT&amp;T requires to transmit our recordings to them, which is $600 a month and has not been approved, but this equipment will make us capable of doing that.
Okay. It's $600 a month for however long we want
That's right.
...to provide that to AT&amp;T.
That's correct.
Any other discussion?
Well, the only question I have is, and then this is probably going to come down the road, as far as that specific, $600 a month, what are we getting for that, or how much bandwidth would we use per month to make it worth $600, but maybe we'll leave that for another time. We're talking Nicholson times.
I don't, and I would like to see us do that. I don't know if we need to have a work, a study sessions, discussion about that or something. I mean, that's a lot of money to spend, but I'd like the council to discuss that at a different time, it's probably not appropriate here. Any other discussion?
You can't, you can't tie that T1 from the other building to here.
It is there. It's, my understanding, Gary, has talked to me that, no, it has to be a dedicated line for that purpose from this site only.
And that's the only thing they can do with it, is run that video over.
So there's no way we could, like, feed into that and then pop it out? Okay, just wanted to make sure.
We're talking monopoly. Monopoly.
We're talking AT&amp;T.
Monopoly. AT&amp;T monopoly.
I just would think that they would want to help provide a service to the community.
Monopoly, John.
That was funny, John. That was really funny.
I'm having a hard time understanding, but maybe, maybe at a different discussion. I sure would like to see all of the community, or as much of the community as possible, have the opportunity to see what we're doing here. Just, I think that helps with the, with the community to be allowed, and that's, I just, that's a lot of money, and I have a hard time justifying, what would that be, $7,200 a year?
$7,200 bucks a year.
For as long as we want to do it, so...
Maybe we should have a nice letter to the editor about the fact that Cox gives it to us free and AT&amp;T wants to charge.
Well, I noticed the editor's taking notes, and maybe he'll...
Mr. Maxie, you write the letter.
I will, as an ex-employee.
Mr. Maxie said, I think he'll be good for a quote after the meeting. All right, the item that we're looking at right now is Item 4, and I'm sorry, but any other discussion, discussion? Call the roll, please.
Bradway?
Yes.
Maxie?
Yes.
Alberts?
Yes.
Gerba?
Yes.
You know, and Grayson, there was one other item, one other, it's not a question, but just as a, kind of a point of order and clarification. When it says waive competitive bidding, can you explain what that means?
Yes. First of all, the purchase of equipment does not fall under the state's Competitive Bidding Act. However, we do have a ordinance in Yukon that does require that we receive competitive bids on the project. In this particular case, because it does not require competitive bidding, we are not choosing the lowest bidder. We are choosing the company that was most responsive and most met all of our requirements for this particular set of equipment. We have two other bids, which took us, what, Gary, six months to get two other bids? And one of them was lower, but did not meet what our specifications were. The other one was significantly higher, did meet our qualifications, but again, was significantly higher than this bid. The, the state law and our ordinance says the lowest and the best, and that's what we're doing here.
Okay. Well, we just see that a lot, and I just...
Are any of these local companies that bid on this?
Oklaun City.
Okay. Well, you can take a local bid, or what, 3% higher?
Three to five.
Yeah, if they're, if they're a local company.
If they're a local company. But we don't have any companies that meet the specs that do this.
Okay. Thank you for that information. Next item is Item 5, and that's "Consider approving an agreement with the Board of Regents of the University of Oklahoma for design options for the revitalization plan on Main Street Route 66 to be developed by the University of Oklahoma College of Architecture faculty and students for the period from August 1st, 2012 through July the 31st of 2013 at a cost of $65,000 to be paid from the hotel motel tax revenue." Do I have a motion?
Motion to approve. Second.
Discussion?
Yes.
Mr. Bradway?
Yes. Question. I read the agreement, and it has all the terminology, it has who's going to do what, to whom, at what time, pretty much. The, this initiative that we're engaged in, my question is, basically, we've tried this in the past, and we've tried getting local merchants involved on Main Street, and I think there was only one that opted for it. Everybody else opted out. Now, we're, we're ready to spend $65,000 on a year's service with the OU School of Architecture, the students and the professors, and I'm sure it'd be a good project for them, give them, give them training and experience as students. That's well and good, but at the end of it, when it comes to an end, and they try this, this implementation that you're talking about, my question is, are, who's going to be involved in it besides the city? Is it just for the city that we're going to do all the work and then pay for whatever they come up with later to attract business to downtown or make it better for the businesses, and the businesses will have no obligation, or they won't pay anything, or they have an option to opt in or opt out? What is going to happen after we spend our $65,000 on this architectural study?
The idea would be, Councilman, to have this be a springboard, if you will, into a complete community planning process, to have a starting point that includes ideas that would stretch everybody's imagination. That's why we use graduate students at the university, as well as the faculty, for a multisemester project. We would hope, and we would anticipate, that not only the property owners, but the tenants as well, up and down Main Street, would become stakeholders in this process, significant stakeholders, to develop Main Street from Garth Brooks, particularly all the way to the east. Additionally, the scope of work, as outlined, would call for other work to be done on Yukon Parkway, Ranchwood, Cornwell, and Garth Brooks, our arterial streets into our immediate downtown. It's one thing to design a great downtown, but we've got to have a way to get people to it.
Right. I understand that. Now, you'd probably have good luck on Garth Brooks with the box stores and people, but downtown Main Street's tough for you. Folks down there don't have a 10-seater topped in, because it's about money, and they're making it day to day. So it's hard for them to see the big vision and spend money, particularly if they're tenants, you know?
But that's why we hope to make them stakeholders in the process.
Okay, so it's a hope that we do this.
Well, I would, from, from what we have heard from our downtown property owners and not only property owners, but operators, they're excited about this, they're ready to get into it, they're ready to do it. Everybody that we've talked about up and down Main Street, at least that I've talked to, they're very excited about the opportunity. But additionally, this is our entire community's Main Street, and we want to bring those people in as stakeholders as to what happens on Yukon's Main Street, beyond just the property owners and the tenants, the operators up and down Main Street. We think, and have been encouraged by the responses that we've gotten from those people, and anticipate a successful buy-in from everybody.
Until you tell them how much money?
Not going to tell them how much money. That's not, it is for them to decide how much money.
Oh, so it's volunteer, how much money they want to put into it. Okay. Now, when they volunteer how much, there's going to be an actual cost.
There will be, absolutely.
There'll be an actual cost. Now, those that volunteer or opt out or don't, and if those that come in, there's not going to be a requirement. They're going to have to put so much money in it, it's just out of their goodwill on how much they're going to do.
What they want to do with their business.
So that means that when it goes into effect, that the merchants will pick it up, whatever they want to pick up, and then the City of Yukon will have to pay the balance.
Basically, ours is going to be a street scape on what we do in support of the private concerns along the side. We already have the responsibility of our Main Street.
Right.
The lighting, the sidewalk, those kinds of things. We have that responsibility today.
But...
This will be a guideline on how we're going to spend our money, how we're going to continue on beyond what we're doing today.
But the money we spend is for the city?
Our stuff.
Our, our stuff, nothing else, okay? And if anybody else wants to tag along or join, they feel free to do so.
That's right.
But we're not going to pay for them to do it or subsidize them. There's no subsidy in it, no pay. This is strictly for the landscape.
That's nothing in the plan.
Okay.
Nothing in the plan.
And that plan won't change, will it?
Not that I'm aware of, unless the voters decide that that's what they want to do.
Yeah, you'd have to take it to the voters, you know, for them to do it. All right. Thank you very much.
I just got a real quick question. Grayson, what is your, in your opinion, if we went to a private design consultation firm, what would this exact same service cost the city to come up with this basically design plan? And maybe that's kind of a crazy, it's hard to come up with.
Well, it's not, because I asked a very good question.
A bunch more.
That's, that's why I'm asking.
I, I, we asked that question sitting in there, and I, I told them, I guess, guys, that you're just going to have to convince me how to buy $130,000 worth of services for $65,000, you know?
Right.
Because that is the low end of what going to the private sector to do this very service would cost. And what I was really looking for here is those bright eyes of those students. Something to look at it differently than anybody has looked at it before. That, you know, we have certain eyes, all of us, but I, I really wanted that independent party with those fresh eyes to come and look at our situation, and how do we make it better? That, and that's what we're after.
Yeah. Well, we're already using them in the park, you know, and for other deals, so this is good. And besides, it's an internship for them.
That's right.
They get to practice on something that's actually, it's going to be here. And if you had to pay $65,000 for a private firm, that'd probably be one architect and maybe a secretary. It would be pretty much a mom-and-pop operation, very limited.
This is going to be professionally done, and their, their, the results of their scope of work to date have been impressive. They, they truly, truly have. And also, Oklaun City, Edmund Stillwater, it's, it's been very, very good, very impressive.
Thanks.
Grayson, a couple of other things. Just, I know in your, in our discussions about this, you had talked with me, the University of Oklahoma was not the only, I mean, for instance, you went to Oklahoma State and consulted with them. You consulted other organizations about doing this project. They were the cream. They ended up being by far the best, best option for our community.
Mitch and Tammy and Scarlett and I met numerous times, not only with the university, with Oklahoma State University School of Architecture, and our view was that the OU scope of work far exceeded any others that we visited with, including some private firms. It seemed like to us that bringing in, what are we going to do with our arterial streets, rather than just drawing some pretty pictures about how we're going to do the medians in downtown, what are we going to do about sidewalks and that sort of thing? That brought an extra element to this plan that no other plan brought. So, in the end, this plan and this proposal rose to the top and was, in fact, the cream of the crop.
And if this passes tonight, I, have you discussed with the chamber and with what's the Yukon tomorrow? I mean, those, I know with Yukon tomorrow, this is some of the stuff that we talked about, so I hope that we're not going to, will that information and all that, those hours and time be shared with the, and then I assume the chamber will also, are there?
They're going to be in on the planning.
They'll be consulted and involved, and, okay. So it's a community effort involving the...
It's also not going to be a plan. You know, when we started looking at, Bob's point is very good, that we've tried this before. We found plans, revitalization plans, comprehensive plans dating back to the early '90s, late '80s, and we had to blow the dust off of them. We really did. We had to blow the dust off of them. We're not going to do this. This has got to be a living... This has got to be a living document. We intend to guide the, this will affect how do we approve permits within our downtown? How do we go forward from here on new construction, on remodel, on any revitalization, both within and without city rights away? So we're very excited about this opportunity. We think it's a great, great beginning. You know, when I first looked at UConn, when you take the center of commerce and move it to an intersection that far away from the center of downtown, it can't do anything but put pressure on the center of downtown. And I think a lot of what we are seeing is because of that. Those reinvestment dollars, we intend to now make it available, available, that we're going to do the same thing in downtown. Plus, it's not going to be long until Garth Brooks and I forty-four builds out. We've got to have new corridors of commerce for our community, and that's what we're trying to build here.
This also is an idea to extend the city to the, to the east down Highway sixty-six, and it looks at that, that whole area, right?
That's right.
Okay. And also, to me, it seems like the city's kind of taken the lead, so you say that it's not just an idea about the, the planters and the sidewalks and the center medians, but I hope that when we get this, that the city may go ahead and we're going to improve the planters, the sidewalks, and the center medians, hoping that that will-
Well, you look at the Bricktown model, you know, everybody was worried about how much money the city of Oklahoma City spent in Bricktown. But the fact of the matter is that tenfold over what the city invested came back in private investment to downtown.
So this is not just talking about, this is, we're going to go do it now?
That's right.
Okay. Any other discussion? Call the roll, please.
Maxie?
Yes.
Bradway?
Yes.
Gerba?
Yes.
Alberts?
Yes. Last item is number six, and that's consider approving an expenditure of funds in the amount of twenty-three thousand two hundred and sixty-six dollars for the repair of the City Hall Skylight enclosure by WALCO, Walco, to be paid from the capital improvement budget. Do I have a motion?
Motion to approve.
Second.
Discussion.
This is needed, needed, needed for years around here. That thing leaked the first time I ever walked into it.
And this is under what we budgeted for.
That's good.
Grayson, can you give us just a general idea of what they're going to do here?
Actually, we're going to build a Plexa glass dome over the existing dome. It will extend far enough away from the edges of the existing dome and be sealed far enough away that the engineers believe that no invasion of water can incur, can occur from where it is going to be. It's going to be sealed, it will, it will allow the light to come back in through the dome. By the way, I got to see that for the first time when the, when the contractors were up on there and took the, took the tarp off, and it is, it is beautiful. And we, we anticipate that this will service well for the time it needs to service.
Other discussion? Call the roll, please.
Gerba?
Yes.
Alberts?
Yes.
Bradway?
Yes.
Maxie?
Yes.
Next item is seven, and that's the City Manager's Report.
First, I'd like to talk about sales tax. Always like to talk about sales tax when it's good. Sales tax for the January collection period that was received in March was up by thirteen point six six percent over the previous year's collection period, and that brings us to a total year-to-date of five point seven percent. Of note, if you look at the trend lines, and I, I know that you all receive these, these reports, but if you look at the trend lines, we knew that it was going to go down as a dollar value compared to last month. However, it is also important to note that the high point for last year was December sales tax collections, and that the collections for January this year were only slightly below Christmas collections for last year. So we are very, very encouraged by that. Further, if you look at the trend lines and the five-year weighted average of sales tax collections, you will find that we tend to drift up and in some cases spike up slightly in the last three or four months of collections for the year. So we feel very encouraged by the sales tax collections. Also, last month, we talked about the unusual increase in use tax collections and how we had reserved two hundred and eighty-nine thousand dollars for the next three years because of a very strong spike in use tax collections. It did, in fact, come back down for the, for the January time period. However, the sales tax collection for January still was up over the previous year by thirty-eight point five five percent. So we're very encouraged by the sales tax growth, particularly as we enter the budgetary season. A couple of other things, we, we have received a grant for fifty-four thousand dollars for a new storm siren that will be out on the west side of town. We have had that application in for many, many months, and we just received word that it has been granted. In fact, the siren itself is on the ground right now. We are waiting on the pole that it'll be mounted on to be delivered. We were able to make our twenty-five percent match on this project with in-kind alone, no cash from the city, all in-kind services. Also, Gary pointed out to me last week and then reiterated this morning in staff meeting, the results of the last two weeks of surplus auctions. I'm very happy to report to you that the first week of March, the surplus sales, which you have approved their surplus, amounted to just short of eighteen thousand five hundred dollars. And the second week amounted to just over sixteen thousand dollars. So in two weeks, we were able to get over forty thousand dollars in revenue to the city for the sale of surplus property. And guys, you can't believe what people will pay for what you think you're going to throw away.
Oh, yes, I can.
People were buying barrels of used brass without ever coming and looking in the barrel, was it all there? And they were paying three thousand dollars for it. It's amazing what, what doing the online auction has done for the disposal of our surplus. And Gary, I thank you and your staff for what they do. It's been a great, great resource to the city. Taste of UConn is coming in a week. It's a great event. It does great things and serves a lot of people very, very well. Please call Parks and Recreation for tickets to Taste of UConn. And finally, we talked a couple of weeks ago about the Storm Shelter Grant. I am happy to report to you this evening that we have, in fact, received our award letter from FEMA through the Oklahoma Emergency Management Office. We received a total grant of one million three hundred and eighty-four thousand two hundred and eighteen dollars, which is anticipated to provide five hundred and seventy-five, not five hundred, but five hundred and seventy-five shelters within the city limits of UConn, Oklahoma. If you'll remember, we originally applied for five hundred, we ended up getting five hundred and seventy-five. If history holds true on the way that the project will, will run, the first five hundred and seventy-five of those two hundred people will say we're not interested in anymore. For whatever reason, we're just not interested. We will then move down the list another two hundred names, and of those two hundred, eighty will say we're no longer interested. And we will continue to move down that list continually until we fill all five hundred and seventy-five of the shelters. When that is done, we'll make application for another round of funding.
Excellent. Great report. Any questions? The next item is new business. Any new business?
None, Mr. Sieges.
Counsel discussion. Mr. Maxie?
I don't believe so, Sieges.
Mr. Bradway?
Uh, yes, Sieges, how, I have the distinction of representing the flood plain in UConn. How'd we do on the rainfall? Do we have any flooding or any major events?
Not any major events that were reported. We had some areas perform better than anticipated. We had other areas that did not perform as well, as you would expect. But all in all, after the rain event, and it was a significant rain event, we did very well.
How about Ward Four? That's where all the water goes.
Believe it or not, it performed better than, better than anticipated on, luckily it came slow, it was not a hard, fast rain, but we did very well.
Didn't have to close any streets, rescue any cars?
No.
No? That's a, that's a good rainfall, then. Only other thing I have then is congratulations to Mike McCarron for winning Ward Four seat. He's hiding over there behind the pole. Mike, you're going to have to learn how to get out front. But that's it for me tonight, thank you.
Mr. Gerba?
Nothing for me, thanks.
Got a couple of things. Congratulations, Mike, look forward to working with you. I've had an opportunity over the last couple of weeks since we were here, I had a chance to go to the UConn Coalition, they were here a couple of years ago, and asked us to work with them to pass the, oh, I wrote it down, the social host law, and we worked with them. They used to do a lot of drugs and alcohol, education for kids, they have expanded that just to good decision-making for kids. Still includes drugs and alcohol, but also now they're dealing with cell phones and driving, texting and driving, making just good, good decisions. But it's a really worthwhile organization here in our community and involves the schools, and I was honored to, to go and, and talk with them. I also had a chance to go to see Odyssey of the Mines, and I got to be a little lay auctioneer for them, and we had a little fundraiser and raised some money. They're going to go to the Nationals competition, and they've been very competitively, competitive nationally for a long time and are sending teams back to Nationals again. Basically, that's a group of kids, if I understand it, you have a project that you're given, a certain amount of time to do it, and a limited budget, and you're, you're supposed to solve this problem. I said, to me, it sounds kind of like growing up on the farm, you know, when I was given, my uncle would say, "Go fix it, we don't have any money, here's some bantam wire and duct tape." But same, same type of deal. Also, can report that we prepared and sent off the funding paperwork and actually met with our best bank to finish up some documents for the purchase of our vehicles, our trash trucks and city vehicles and stuff, so that's underway. So I, that's all I have to report, and with nothing else before the council, we-